Good evening. I'd like to call this special select board meeting to order, May 21st, 7:00 PM. This is a call handout. All those who are able, you may stand for the plate. Bob, would you like to give us a little touch?
Absolutely. I point the agents to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bernie, could we have the roll call, please?
We have Marla Bishop.
Here.
Chair of ITAL.
Yes.
Ed Haller.
President.
John Loyd.
Here.
Ken Walto.
Here.
And Mike Skowzynski, excused.
Okay. I didn't have any minutes in my packet. There are no minutes. Did anyone get any minutes?
No.
So we'll, no, we'll just continue. This is the public address to the board section. This is the time when the public may address the board on any item listed on the meeting agenda or on any issue of the town. If you intend on addressing the board at this time, we ask that you do the following. Please identify yourself by name, address, or the company institution you represent. The public address to the board segment will last no more than thirty, no longer than 30 minutes. Please make your comments concise and try not to repeat statements made by others. Please address your comments to the board chair. Discussion or debate on any issue may not take place at this time. Questions on procedural matters may be answered by the chair or their designee. Please be cordial and respectful of others. If anyone wishes to be recognized when an agenda item is discussed by the board, please make the request at this time. This request may be granted by the board chair. Address comments to the board chair and be concise. Is there anyone who would like to address the board at this time? Yes, sir.
My name's Sarah Clapper of Sunnyside Drive. I'm here representing a property that my husband owns at 185 East Usetonic Street in regards to a letter that he wrote to the board.
Okay. Would you?
We can discuss it at that time. Or now, whichever. Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi. Ridge Hall, 164 Green Ridge Drive. If I could be recognized on item seven and item 10, if maybe, that would be great.
Well, would you like to?
Well, I did want to address the board on another matter, just to make sure you're aware. As brought up, the charter communications is actually having a hearing before the Department of Communications.
Uh huh.
And the public hearing is the 30th of May. As a town, we can intervene in that, but it has to be done by Wednesday, the 23rd. And I just want to make sure the board was aware of that, because obviously with all the things that are going on with Spectrum.
Yeah, there's a meeting tomorrow in Lenox.
Yeah. But this is a public area on the rates and of things.
Did we get a communication on that?
I don't remember seeing one.
Because it should have gone out.
Did we get one, Ken?
Yes, we did.
We did?
Probably put it in the box.
I don't remember seeing that. I don't remember. This is dated the 27th of April, 2018. Okay. Thanks, Bernie. Yeah. Anyone else?
Cam, show you 3D. I'd like to, we brought up when the stationary mill is taken.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. Thank you. Well, we will open this licensing board at this time. The time is 7:04 PM. And the first, the first item here is a communication from Mr. Clapper with regard to Zips fencing.
I'm here tonight because my alzone's away for work. He wrote me a message to read. He says, "On May 2nd, Christopher spoke with, to Ron Carver over the phone about the fence on Usetonic Street. He wanted to make sure that Ron was planning on extending the fence to the brush line so that it would not be easy for people to enter the yard and trespass from the bar parking lot. Mr. Carver said that he had added the panel to where there was previously a gap and that that was all he had agreed to do. This wasn't Christopher's understanding of the agreement from the last meeting." So Christopher wrote a letter to the licensing board in regards to this. After sending the letter, the fence has been extended as previously agreed. Christopher is happy with the condition and the length of the fence and hopes that in the future it won't take these kinds of actions to make sure that the fence and the property is maintained.
Thank you. I went up myself today to take a look at things and it's, it looks like they did a good job.
Yes.
And it's extended to where that brush is.
Yes.
I don't think I would want to walk through the brush again around the fence.
Yeah, definitely not in the middle of the summer.
Right, right.
So.
So everything's good?
Yeah, we're happy with that.
You guys?
We would just prefer to not have to come to meetings to make sure things got taken care of. I guess that's life.
That's sometimes the way it goes.
Yep.
So, okay. I really, yeah, as I said, I went up there, took a look at things and it appears that what we asked has been accomplished and the matter would be considered closed as far as I'm concerned. Are there any comments from other board members?
Nope, that was the agreement. So they did.
Yeah, we're happy.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, guys, for your time.
Yeah, thank you. Which brings us to a consideration of a license for alcoholic beverages to be drunk on premises at the stationary factory. This is an all alcohol license, consuming alcohol on the property. And before us, we have this extensive application. We also have the notifications of the in-hand delivery to the abutters, which are quite a few that have been taken care of. That was delivered this evening by Attorney Martin's spouse. So what I would like to do is just open it up to those people who would be speaking in favor of this. And we can start with the owner and manager of the station. Mr. Sears.
Thank you. Steve Sears, 260 North Mountain Road in Dalton. And I would like to give you just a brief explanation to what we're doing and what this contains. So we, this is a general license for serving alcohol. The intent is to provide bar service for events. So it is not for when we do not have events. It's only to support our business of, which we have an event license as well, which we came before the board last year for. Pretty straightforward. We have a kitchen going in. We have a special permit for that. We intend to file the permit for construction of the bar. We have two bars being built that are back-to-back along with a catering kitchen. So under the special permit that we have, we have to start construction of the kitchen, I believe, by the middle of this year. And our intent is to file those permits, or the permit for the construction, hopefully later this week or next week. And have the framework of the kitchen well underway by August. And I'm here to answer any questions that people would have about what we're doing.
Is, and maybe Ken or John can answer this. Is the application contingent upon the kitchen being completed or a plan being submitted before this is actually approved?
No, John.
It doesn't?
You don't even have to have a kitchen if you don't want to.
No?
You're just doing it because of, going to be hosting events.
That's right.
Which require food service.
Correct.
Okay.
I just wanted to let you know that that's, you know, it's part of our special permit that we came here last year for. And I just wanted to do that.
To put the kitchen in?
Yep.
Okay.
So we have.
I don't, I don't remember, but.
Yep.
Okay.
So what we did under that special permit is we actually changed so that we have assembly use within the building. And then we have to comply with the, you know, all the things with the fire department and, you know, all the code stuff, which we do. And, but we also, at the same time, applied for a special permit for the kitchen. And that, that was contingent on starting within one year of that hearing, which was, I believe, in July last year. But I don't believe that the license that we're applying for is contingent on that. I just think it's somewhat relative, somewhat relative to the business, you know?
Okay. Well, I will go up to board members for questions.
I'm recusing myself.
Okay.
Hey, yeah, I have questions, Steve. Correct me if I'm wrong, I've reviewed the whole file. But I understand the capacity is going to be 1,441 people.
Eventually, it will be.
Now, that means probably a minimum of 500 or 600 cars if all 1,441 people show up. Do you have adequate parking today?
We do not have adequate parking. What we've been doing in situations where we expect to exceed our parking lot, which we've done, we have maps of on-street parking and where, that we actually hand out to people that show where that parking is. We've actually worked with the police department, Chief Co., to take areas that even where there is parking allowed, we feel that it's a little tight. So we've worked with them to put temporary no parking signs like they would at the school when they have events. And then they come down after the event. And then for areas where, or times where we feel that those events would exceed that type of thing, we've actually used auxiliary parking lots and bus people in. We've used Ashlot Park. And when we had a large party last year with General Dynamics, they actually arranged something with Wakona High School. And so people parked at Wakona High School and then they had a shuttle bus running back and forth. So depending on the situation and who it is, we would set up shuttle bus services to provide that so that we, we don't overload the neighborhoods or, you know, we provide access, because it's impossible with our current situation to, and we have 100, we have 100 parking spaces on the property, but we obviously would exceed those. We also provide parking attendants. So all of the last events that we've had, we've had a minimum of three parking attendants. And we set them at both of the entrances and those attendants then ask the people, you know, why, you know, where they're going and then they give them advice on where to park. So we, that's what we've done thus far, John.
It's good to bring that out. You know, put the neighborhood at ease. It's just pure bad, you know, 1,400 people and probably 500 cars. Just an interesting question. Is that lot available to you that's owned by the Horst family?
We have never pursued using that lot during our events. Peter, I, we have a good relationship with them, but I didn't ever want to stress their lot, so we haven't asked them specifically.
But it sounds well organized, well thought out.
So far, I believe it has been. The other thing we've done is where we have events that are, where we feel that we're moving into the neighborhood, so to speak, with vehicles. We also have sent people out the morning after the events to walk the streets and make sure that we pick up the trash. So.
It's a big part of our business, the morning of.
Or the day before.
Yeah. Yeah. Notification, you know, when you have a large party like that, or there ever maybe some notices that you, like you walk the streets to clean things up, do you?
Well, we advertise, but we, you know, that's a good question on how to do that, but we'd certainly consider, you know, notifications.
It was, it was one of my concerns when I read the application too, when it was 1,400 capacity for the, I think there are three areas that you designated. And I'm about the same thing. What happens if you have, you know, it'd be great for business, obviously, but what happens in the event that it takes place and, you know, there are 1,400 people that may be attending?
Anything that, in a private event such like as we would do with someone coming in to rent the space for a large wedding or a corporate event, anything that we deem will be over 300 people, we've asked to have people plan for auxiliary parking. And so far, so good. We had, we started that last year, actually, and with the use of Ashlot Park.
Is there any?
Yeah, I got one more question.
Yeah.
Steve, I noticed that from time to time, you've had entertainment there that was basically open to the public. For instance, you had a tribute band there. For those of you who don't know what a tribute band is, it's a regulation band that does songs and music from a famous band. Am I correct in saying that?
Yeah.
All right.
So, and these primarily are attended by young people.
I didn't sound that one.
No? Okay.
Well, it's the Beatles.
I guess my question is going to be, if the case originally was primarily a younger crowd you're trying to attract, do you intend to let people that are from 18 to 21 into the place even though they're not old enough to drink?
Yes. Thus far, everything we've done is family oriented. And so people are carted at the door and given wristbands so that, you know, just there's a, there's a process by which we've used. We got advice from that and have used, everything that we've done thus far has not been us serving the alcohol. So we would work with, say, John Kelly, who's been very good and has a lot of experience with that. So they would get wristbands. But everything we've done has been family oriented.
Does a wristband entitle you to drink or do not drink?
To drink. It says that you are over 21.
If you have a wristband, you're allowed to go to the bar and drink.
Correct. That's correct.
What? Minors are still allowed to go to these functions?
Yes. And children. And dogs, sometimes.
Thanks, Steve. Appreciate it.
All right. Well, let's do it. The only other question I would say, I don't know if you, if you can, or if there are any plans for making additional parking or reconfiguring the parking lot? Is there anything at all?
The last thing we did was to stripe the parking lot, which was a request that we had based on the special permit that we got, and we complied with that. The only option that I have to expand the parking, I have two options. One is we have a loading dock on the north side, which provides us some parking, but because the town, the system that was put in to actually catch the water isn't working completely, I am pretty reluctant to do that because it will fill up with water in a storm event. But we can use the top of it. So that's one. And we have two duplex homes on Willis Street that I don't really want to take down, but that is our property. And that's the, that's the only ability we have is to, would be to take those houses down, which I really don't want to do. Would I, I think there's a very good model in North Adams. When Mass Moca has very large events, they work with the city. They come up with maps and they have auxiliary parking. And then, you know, they, they work with other businesses or municipal lots and have people, you know, they direct them to those lots. They have good maps. And my feeling is, I mean, obviously, we have Pine Grove Park, which can put probably more cars than we would need. As you've seen, you know, when there's large baseball games and softball games over there, there's a lot of parking. But I would hope that we could come up with something that is similar to what North Adams does when they get 10,000 people in an event.
Yeah.
And really overflow the city. So we're certainly open to suggestions.
Yeah. Well, it sounds like you're trying to get a handle on it anyways. Anything else?
Well, nobody want to speak against it?
Well, I just want to get the board's opinion.
Okay. I'm all set.
Okay. Cam, you want to?
Yeah. I'm Cam Pashay, 38 Lansbury Avenue. This is my wife, Linda. And we live across the street from the mill. And we're in favor of what Steve's asking for. And we've been there going on 10 years. And Steve has purchased, I think, about three years ago, four years ago, five years ago, five years ago.
Really?
And there really hasn't been any difference from when Cranes ran the mill to now, except it's quieter. Even with the bands and lanes and stuff, we don't hear no noise.
Good.
And we're right in front of them.
That's good to know.
Yeah.
So we're in favor. Thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak in favor of the, or the application, I should say? Hey, anyone like to speak in opposition? Okay. May I have a, unless there's other comments or you'd like to discuss this further among us, may I have a motion?
I move that we approve the license request.
I will second that.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to approve the license request. Any further discretion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? One abstention. Thank you.
Hey, congratulations, you're in the bar business.
Wow. Big time.
Thank you all very much.
John, before you, yes, close the license board, I just want to say one thing.
Is it, with regard to?
Yep, but they don't have to be, this is regard to this license, but.
Okay.
This is for you.
Okay, thank you.
This is a copy of the legal notice regarding this license.
You okay? Ready?
All right. You will note that this legal vote notice pertains to this license. I don't want to say anything during the transaction, do anything to upset this. But it's ill-ordered or there is a deleted section pointing to the arrow, license to be consumed, and it should have said "on the premises," which is the whole key to this license. And it wasn't included. Now, if this adds any effect on what we've done, it'll take a lawyer to figure that out, but I'm an attorney, just a bar room attorney, that's all. And besides that, you'll note on the bottom, my name is deleted also. There's probably a reason for that, but I don't know what it is.
Is there, now, we are, well, no, we're still open this licensing board. The copy that I, the copy that I have here that was sent out is the same that you just gave us.
Definitely appeared in Eagle only one time.
Unless it was something that the Eagle didn't print right. Is there an original, Steve?
I don't know if in this package is the original one that was intended to be sent.
I didn't see, I didn't see any original.
I didn't see one either.
All I, all I see is what's been sent out to the abutters, which is the same thing that John just gave us now.
Well, this originates with us.
Well, yeah, if it, this does?
This?
Yes, it does. It does.
It typically is done by the applicant.
Yeah.
I don't typically review them.
Oh, really?
I see that I will have to start reviewing them.
Well, I don't know if it was something that maybe the, within the Eagle, didn't get printed right by the Eagle.
I have to find the original. For the purpose of quality control, I should start to take a look at these legal notices.
Well, yeah, I mean, you shouldn't because you're not an attorney and this is a legal document, put in Eagle by the applicant's attorney. Yes, no?
Go ahead, Steve.
I asked Tom Martin about this this afternoon. And what he said is that there has, so we, the town files on behalf of the applicant. So we gave, told the town what we were doing and filing this, which creates a public, this is my understanding, which creates a public notice. And according to Tom, what he said I should communicate is that there was a clerical error in that process. But it's, I don't believe it's in this document. I think it happened in the posting. That's my understanding.
So, but what happened is this, it's a town.
I believe so, but I don't, I don't want to.
Made the error, wore the paper in the transaction, all of this, so if we could.
Yeah, and he wasn't pointing to who made it.
Okay. And hopefully it doesn't affect what we, what we did here tonight. If it, if it does.
Check with his attorney, first thing in the morning.
Well, I, I did ask them before I left.
Did they say anything?
They didn't think it would have any effect. They thought if someone was to contest this, they could potentially use that and, you know. But they also didn't feel that there was anything done wrong on behalf of the applicant. It was a clerical error that happened after this was filed with the town.
But what we do here is actually irrelevant. They go to the ABC and all this documentation they require, and they're the ones that could be the final judge of this issue if, in fact, there is an issue. Well, you shouldn't. Get ahead of it, Steve, that's all.
Yep.
That's why they don't want to bring this up until after we've voted.
Thank you, John.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks, Cam.
We did, well, the paper, we did all, everything.
Even the plate of boards.
Mmm, the plate of boards.
Yeah.
I guess we will close this licensing board at 7:26 PM. And the next item is a review of the net metering project with EPMG, the owner being Mike Finer. So Mike is here. And we in our packet received, thank you, excuse me, a breakdown of the project overview from Ken, right? This is your document. And also a list of questions that we would probably end up asking you. Did you get copied on that? Yes, you did. From Beth?
Yes. I did, I did respond to that.
Okay. So, why don't, at this point, Kevin, you could just quickly go over what you gave us?
Yeah, well, what I gave you?
Yeah.
This was the information provided by Beth last week. You got a black and white copy of it?
Yeah.
And it shows the original project overview as of February 1st, 2018. And I really directed to the bottom line. It shows that the 17 and a half percent discount of BBD Solar and the 15% on the Rockwood Digest are what the bottom line would be. savings of approximately $5,200 a year for the solar project, $3,500 a year for the digester, total of $8,700 a year. And remember, the digester only goes out to 10 years, while the solar project goes out to 20 years. Total benefits for both projects are about $144,000.
Over the 20-year period?
Yeah, over the 20-year period.
I believe it would be 25 years for that metering.
If it was extended. But right now, the deal is 20 years. So Beth only analyzed it over a 20-year period. Yeah, there's capacity to go on out another five years. So she updated that last week, showing you the reduction in the potential benefits based on the fact that BBD Solar would have to reduce their net discount, net metering rate to 15% from the 17 and a half percent. Thereby, and I won't go through all the detail of the benefits, but it lowers the benefit over the 20-year period from 144,000 to about 128,600. You can see that on the bottom. Projects are exactly the same, generating the same amount of power and so forth. It's just that the discount, net metering discount is a little bit less. Now, based on Beth's discussions, the third printout shows you what the, if the decision was made to go totally with the Rockwood digester, of course, that's was made to go totally with the Rockwood digester, of course, that's only a 10-year period, and the total benefits would be $97,000. In that case, they could up their discount to 17 and a half percent. Remember, that, that's the difference. You sold them the whole 500,000 kilowatts, and they could honor their original offer of 17 and a half percent, and that would raise the benefits over 10 years to $97,000. Now, what I did was, there's a third analysis here. I did something called it, calculate the present value of the future benefits, because everybody gets the idea that a dollar in 20 years isn't worth a buck today. So you have to choose an appropriate discount rate, and you apply it to the future stream of benefits, and you get a sense of what the real value of this is today, given the fact that a dollar in 10, 20 years is not going to be worth the same amount. And what you will see is the nominal value of the combined project is $128,000, as we just discussed. The nominal value of the digester is $97,000, as we just discussed. Now, in 10 years, at a discount rate of 2.6%, and I got those discount rates from the rates on AA bonds, Dalton's a AA community, as of last Friday. And that's the appropriate discount rate for this type of project. So the real value of that, intended for this, the digester, is $81,000. The real value of the digester and solar projects combined is $94,000. And so you can see with the 20-year project, the discount rate's slightly higher because you're going out 20 years, so therefore the discount's just a little bit higher.
These, these calculations for the 20 years is assuming that with the digester, after 10 years, we no longer?
Nothing is done.
Nothing is done.
No renewal of the project.
No renewal.
Yeah.
And so then only half our, half our energy use. I mean, we wouldn't increase the net metering credits with solar after that 10-year project. It's assumed that we would just have the same split?
Yeah, it's assumed that it's static. We're not renewing anything with the digester, we're not moving those, we're not moving our power over the solar, we're just doing nothing. So it just looks at, it's, it's static analysis. If you look at the projects as proposed, what's the present value of the future benefits? Another way to look at this is what happens in 10 years with the solar and the digester project? Well, just very roughly speaking, the $63,000 is cut in half, let's call it $32,000. So in 10 years, the benefits to the solar and digester project are really about $62, $63,000, because we're not going out 20 years. It's another way to look at it. But given the projects as we've set them up, you can see what the value of those future benefits are, assuming that we don't do anything in 10 years, or don't go five more years on the solar.
Okay. Thank you. Well, as I indicated, we all received the email from Beth Greenblatt with regard to this discussion and questions that will be put forth to Mr. Finer. And Mike, you said you sent a response to all these questions to Beth?
I did, correct.
Okay.
You know, and I haven't seen them. They need, sometimes Beth, communications go into my junk mouth, people want to wait for a minute and let Mike speak. I'll go see if I've got them, and I'll copy them for everyone.
Okay. Very good.
I didn't know they'd come back, but sometimes that happens.
Anyway, I guess you know, get a pen down here.
What are we hanging up? we can follow along?
Sure.
All right. Or if you would just like to give an overall?
Uh, I can, yes, I can, I can, well, why don't I just kind of give an overall, I guess? That would probably be the easiest way to summarize it. So the project was originally intended to be mechanically complete by March 30th. That was the, the original intent, and that would have, that would have kept the SREC factor at where it was when the original proposal was made. Some delays in the permitting process, you know, in a difficult winter, made us realize that we weren't going, and, and a tariff, the Trump tariff on the modules, that then resulted in a run on the module supply in the market and prices going up. We realized that that project, that we weren't going to be able to mechanically complete that project by March, by March 30th. So at that point in time, we had to take a look at the new program that was coming in, which is the SMART program. And that program hadn't been finalized yet. As of now, there's a program summary, we have, you know, a pretty good idea of what that's going to be. They've given us a blueprint for it, but that's not finalized completely yet either. The tariffs, however, have been established, what the net metering tariffs are going to be. So at that point in time, we had to step back and take a look at which one of those programs made the most sense for our company, and also the people that would be off taking energy from our system. So that summary was complete, you know, April 26th, you know, so we've, we've run some numbers based off of that. So both result in a decrease in the revenue that the project will generate, which is why we had to come back to the town and go from the 17 and a half percent discount on the net metering credit to the 15% discount on the net metering credit. The next haircut, what we call it, on that program will be an additional 5%. That additional 5% is, for all intensive purposes, very equal financially to what the SMART program revenues are going to be. So we were able to offer the 15% discount on the SREC II extension program, which is the additional 5% haircut, and the SMART program, which is going to be implemented sometime, well, was supposed to be implemented earlier this year, but looks like it's going to be the tail end of summer now. The difference is, is that the SMART program is a 20-year feed-in tariff versus a 10-year SREC on the incentive that is currently in the SMART program. So it's, we could spend hours talking about the differences between the two programs in terms of incentives and the way that they're set up and the way that solar developers and farmers are going to be reimbursed, but at the end of the day, that 5% haircut and that next SREC II program and the SMART program revenues are pretty, pretty equal.
But you say there's a, there's a decrease in revenue to you?
There's a decrease in revenue from the energy being produced by the system, correct. To me, as the owner of the system, yes, correct.
And so because of that, you're coming down on your percentage to us?
Correct. To maintain the same bottom line revenue, we would have to do that. We need to meet a certain payback, return on investment.
But that's not, that's not guaranteed, though, because you don't know all the information from, with regard to the SMART program?
Well, it would depend on if this project, we do know the information on the SMART program, there is a blueprint for it. There, the utilities are right now in discussions on the blueprint that the DOER has put out, but I, all the, the consensus is that the blueprint that they've given us is going to It would have to if the program is going to be implemented at the end of this summer. It's taken them well over a year to get to this point. But could something change? It's possible.
Could the discount go down? Could our discount go down?
Uh, if, well, they already established the, the, the feed-in tariff for this project behind this utility, so that would be highly unlikely, but if there was to be a change in that, they're, did the auction on it, if there was to be a change in that for some reason, then that discount could go down, correct. It's highly unlikely at this point.
So that could change what we receive?
We're hoping to get the project built in the SREC II extension program.
Okay. What's the timeline on that?
In that case.
Is that August?
Uh, that would be, that would be August, correct.
The end of August.
Correct. That's what they're, that's what they're saying. The SREC II extension is until the SMART program is implemented.
Yeah.
We don't know, I mean, they told us the SMART program was going to be implemented in February, that was their first communication to us. Then it was going to be April, that was the second communication to us. Then it was going to be June, that was the third communication, and now it's August. So it, it could be August, it could be later, but the project has to be under construction before that happens.
Did you have a question, Jim?
Yeah, I had one general question.
Go right ahead.
You mentioned our distinguished leader, and I hesitated to mention his name, who invoked these tariffs in regard to his solar energy issue, in the steel industry, and so many other issues. But now they're seeming to be backing off on these tariffs, and even today, it's on television, that they may cancel the tariffs or, uh.
I hope so.
Yeah. A ceasefire on the tariffs, that was the words they used. Would that benefit your proposal if in fact you now wouldn't be required to pay additional expenses, i.e. tariffs?
Yeah, that would help our, yeah, absolutely, the cost of the system.
And that would be faster on us.
That 30% increase added to the cost of the system, correct. So yes, it would benefit our proposal.
And that would benefit us?
It would, correct.
Okay, thank you. As erratic as the administration is in Washington, it changes from day to day, as we all know. That's all.
Yeah.
Give your fingers crossed is all you can do. But that, they were talking about that, a ceasefire in the tariffs with China.
Yeah.
Where these solar panels originated, I suspect.
Yeah, it had a significant impact on the, on not only the pricing, but the availability of panels. There were panels available on the market, some of them were not tier-one panels, we only, you want to use tier-one, you know, products on our, in our facilities.
Is that the best?
Yeah.
Tier-two is lesser quality?
Correct, yes.
Are there other tiers?
We get the best yield, we get the best, we get the best yield on the system, the better the product that we use.
Are there other tiers?
Oh, yeah, there's tier-one, tier-two, tier-three, and then even some modules that aren't even rated, to be honest with you, so, yeah, so, um, yeah, it would absolutely help. If those are rolled back, that's a 30% change in the cost of the modules, which is a large part of the cost of building the system.
And just for record, it's tariff business, the tariffs are in effect right now.
They are, correct.
They are in effect.
Yeah.
So they're not, some of those tariffs that were initially instituted were automatically withheld, for instance, in the steel industry and other industries. Not much information about your industry, but yours actually went into effect, so the only thing that would benefit yourself and us is to see it rescinded.
Right, we've already seen the increases in the pricing, correct. It's, yeah, so those tariffs are reflected in the pricing of the modules right now, correct.
All right.
Thank you, Mike.
I'd like to go down these questions, because I don't know which ones have actually been answered or which ones haven't, if you don't mind.
Okay.
But before I do, is there anything in particular that any board member would want to bring up? Okay. I think you more or less, under which SMART blocks will EPMG, EPMG honor the 15% discount? I think you already answered that.
Right, under block one of the SMART program.
Okay. Are we still expected to be the host on the project? Now, is that whether we decide to go with you still or not, no matter what?
Yeah, if, if you decide not to take advantage of the discount on the net metering credits through us, then we would still like to talk about being a host for the project. As a municipality, you can host up to 10 megawatts.
Does EPMG expect the project to receive net metering credits, and this is what I don't know what this means, alternative on bill credits? If you could define that for me?
Okay.
No one else, and me?
Okay, so they're, they're very similar. Net metering credits is the current program where they take the net metering tariff that is adjusted monthly, whatever that tariff settles out at, they multiply the kilowatt-hours that the system has pushed to the grid times that, and you will come up with a dollar value that will go to the bill. That would be what you would get your discount on. So yes, it is net metering credits. Alternative, bill credits are a little bit different in that they take, that, that would be relevant to the SMART program, so they would take the feed-in tariff for the SMART program, which is a single number, it doesn't, it doesn't fluctuate monthly, it's not load following, as we call it in our industry. They would take that, multiply it by the kilowatt-hours produced, that would go on the bill as an alternative credit, and then you would receive the 15% of that. So very, very little difference between the two. It's both a number that's multiplied by the kilowatt-hours that are produced to come up with a dollar value credit that then hits your bill, that then you get a discount on.
So it's a different way of calculating the savings?
Yes, it's, yeah, it's different, correct. It'd be a different number, because they're two different programs.
It would be a different number? I know you got me confused. So it's a different number than?
Right, so then, so the net, the net metering tariff can be, it's currently?
13 cents.
13 cents per kilowatt hour. So the net metering tariff can be 13 cents per kilowatt hour in May, can go up in June or go down in June. So it's load following, and it's, it's, it's based off of the basic service rate for, behind that utility, behind that LDC. So that rate fluctuates, depending on what it settles out at the end of every month, similar to what your electric bill does. You know, how many kilowatt-hours you usually use, you just don't know what you're going to pay for until the, until, until the, the LDC, the utility says, you know, we've baked in all the components that make up the number for this month, and here's where it's settled out. The, the SMART program is different in that they have established the net metering credit value to be, depending on what your system is, a fixed number for that 20-year period.
Okay.
So call it 15 cents per kilowatt hour. So it's going to be the kilowatt-hours produced times that 15, times that 15 cents every month for 20 years.
So you don't know what to expect? It could be either or.
It could be either or, correct. But either way, it would be a 15% discount to whatever it is.
But on that fixed rate, that fixed rate could be lower than the net metering rate, net metering credits at one particular time, that could be higher, this could be lower?
Correct. Correct.
But we don't know where we're going either way on this yet? Or you don't know which way you would be going?
We're, we're gonna, no, we are going to go with the net metering credit, which is the number that settles out at the end of every month. We have to go that way. If, there is no other way to go in the SREC II program. If it goes into the SMART program, we have a choice of the net metering credit or the feed-in tariff. We'll probably also go with the net metering credit within the SMART program also.
So no matter what, it would be the net metering credits?
Correct. And that's because that basic service rate directly correlates to what we get paid. So that's the only way that we can get an accurate calculation of what the revenue was going to be to then determine what, you know, our payback is, what our return on our investment is.
Okay.
Not, you know, not, there's risk, there's risk for us either way.
Do you have the capital to build the project?
We do.
Are you planning, is there any plan to either hold your asset or sell it off to another party after construction?
Right now, we are planning on holding the asset.
Is your project sold out?
Is it sold out?
Yeah.
No, not yet.
Because it indicated as a year ago that we had to hurry to get on the bandwagon, because there would be opportunities after last January first, whatever down there is.
Well, we're, we're in the same position where we, we didn't want to lock people in until we knew exactly what was going on. I didn't want to make a promise to anyone that I was gonna, you know...
So you'll be the ultimate owner of the project?
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
If there would be a sale, it would be, it'd be, it'd be like ten or eleven years out. But whoever would purchase that project would have, you know, would be obligated to whatever the contract is, yeah, the existing contract is, yeah.
John, I believe this is what you were talking about. Does a solar module import tariff impact the financial offer to the town? That's what you were asking.
Yeah.
Okay.
And obviously it does.
Yes.
But as I said, there was a movement towards a, a trade deal or a ceasefire or a rescission on, uh, trade with China, and perhaps it'll be rescinded and will be passed through to us and to Mr. Viner. Who knows? Changes from day to day.
Yeah, hour to hour.
Yeah.
What's your schedule for mechanical completion of...
In October.
In October?
Yeah, yeah. We've finally been able to procure the equipment, so we know when the equipment will be delivered. We're in prime building season, so it'll go quickly.
This is still up in Hinsdale, right?
Yes, yeah. Uh, it's on 143, where the old mink farm used to be.
Yeah, mink farm's not there anymore?
No, not anymore.
Really?
No.
Wow, that's an institution.
Yes, it was.
They're still being...
I was unaware of the ways, because I still see them, you know, out there, so... I was unaware of what an institution, what an institution was.
You gotta level the whole thing?
Well, the, uh, the, the field up and back where the mink were raised is, is pretty, pretty level.
Okay. What about the building? Well, the cage, now that's gonna all go.
It's all gone already. Yeah, there's only, there's one left in the front and one left in the back that we have to take out, but the rest of them are gone at this point. Yeah.
Wow.
I wasn't aware that it was one of the premier mink producers in the country, which is pretty...
Yeah, well, you should go there with the...
Pretty interesting.
Transgressors sneaking in. Yeah, yeah, oh yeah.
Yeah.
Do you, do you see any possible issues that could lead to a delay with the completion of this?
No, not at this point.
I think you, well, you know, break ground, I mean, I destructed skyscrapers and nothing, but you already started the...
We've already started the site work, correct?
Work on the site, yes.
Yes, we have, yep.
Good.
Soon as the weather broke, we started moving, which was what, last week?
Yeah. I'm gonna, I'm gonna read this whole, this whole next one verbatim. It's, "Will EPMG provide proof of ownership of the project? Specifically, town council would like to see the agreement redacted as fine between EPMG and BVD assigning the project in Hinsdale to EPMG."
Yeah, we have a copy of the assignment of the ISAB interconnection service agreement.
So that is proof of ownership to you?
I own the property.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that...
So that's signed by Todd?
Right, that's signed by Todd, just goes...
Todd, sending it to you.
Correct.
Okay, so there, there's, is there an expectation of any negotiation with this agreement between the two of you?
No, it's done. It's completely done, yeah.
Well, once the project is completed, or the mechanical end of its completion in October, when would we start seeing a benefit from you or from your project?
That's, um, that can vary. That's completely up in the hands of the utility. I've seen it, I've seen it be a couple of months behind a municipal utility, um, like, like a project in Westfield, and I've seen it go nine, ten, eleven months. So anywhere, you know, in between. And it depends really on the workload at EverSource at the time that we're mechanically complete. So if they're super busy, we'll get pushed off until they have, uh, you know, the available crews to, to connect it.
Okay. Questions?
I want, Ken, the Cow Power one, are they gonna face this possibility when they hook up too? We could see delays from them also?
I don't think so. Their mechanical completion day is April, but I'd have to check to make sure.
They're, they're already waiting to hook to the grid?
As far as I know, they're set and ready to go.
I think that's what Beth told us last week.
Yeah.
What utility are they behind? Do you know?
EverSource.
EverSource?
Yeah, we'd be EverSource in that area, pretty sure.
Okay. And, John?
Well, this sure got a lot more complicated than I ever envisioned it would. And I, I'm disappointed how long it's taking for us to even get to the point where we might save some money.
Exactly. Well, the thing with the, the Cow Power, we have a mechanical completion, it's been done since April, you said thirtieth?
April thirtieth was the, now the target date.
So again, their, their connection may be a couple of months to eleven months.
Correct.
And your completion, mechanical completion is set for October?
Correct.
October thirtieth?
No, I say, uh, October fifteenth, mid-October is our target.
And so from then, the countdown could be another couple of months to eleven months.
Okay.
If we, if we decide to go with Cow Power, we will be assuming a seventeen point five percent rate. And over the ten years, uh, that is them, us going full boat with them. Then over the ten years, uh, between doing both projects, um, there would be an increase of savings, I think it was about fifteen thousand dollars, if I'm correct. Yes. Over the ten-year term.
So they're basing that on the current net metering?
Yes.
Tariff, right?
Yep.
You're saying if we went with the Cow Power only, is that correct?
Yes, the Cow Power only.
We would only be less expensive?
We would.
We, we would save more money?
Yes, we would, over the ten-year period by about... If we went with both, and, and both would be at fifteen percent over that ten-year period, we would, we would save about fifteen thousand dollars less than going with Cow Power right now for the ten years?
Right.
At the seventeen point five, which they have offered.
Right. But we would also like to start as soon as possible. It sounds like the Cow Power would be most likely ready sooner.
Yes. Well, obviously, yeah, I would say obviously it would be. It's at least five months sooner, no matter how you look at it.
Well, it doesn't mean that they would do it in the order that they were finished, as I, as I understand it. EverSource isn't necessarily hook things up.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if their internal policy is relevant to that. I would think that they try to coordinate...
But it's likely they have a head start. Obviously, they have a head start.
Yeah, the requests would go in, and they would put it on the list and...
It's hard to say. It's all, one, another determining factor on how quickly that gets done is what is the nature of the upgrade for the Cow Power project? So, you know, if it's a transformer upgrade or direct transfer trip or, you know, equipment that has to be ordered, um, then it can, it can go up to a year. The circuit that we, that we're on goes into the Berkshire substation, which has just had a bunch of work done to it, so we know that that substation is ready. We're hoping that we would, we would be hooked up relatively quickly based on the fact that that work had been done, but we can't. We, we, we have no, we can't be sure of that.
Are you referring to the Hinsdale, uh, substation?
Correct. Yeah. Yeah, as you know, they've, they've just done a lot.
Yeah, they're taking over ours.
So you know, there's been a lot of work done on that substation, so, so, you know, it's, it's the nature of the upgrade, um, but, you know, to be honest with you, if they're mechanically complete at this point, I would hope, I would hope if I was mechanically complete at this point, um, that I would get interconnected, you know, before someone who wasn't mechanically complete until October.
Exactly.
So that would be a, you know, that'd be a pretty good assumption.
Yeah.
You know, unless there's some major piece of equipment that has a long lead time on it that they have to wait for. And I don't know that, because I don't know the project.
Is there a way to find it out?
Well, we don't, we don't have much time.
Yeah.
Like, we, we, we need to make a decision tonight.
One of the staffers called today from, I didn't anticipate the question, so I didn't bring it with me, but if you want to go on, if you want to table this temporarily and go on to, let's say, eight and nine, I will call and ask him where they stand.
I think that's a great idea.
If you can do that and get an answer, that would be great.
I'll try to do that.
Also, Ken, for the Cow Power, I would like to know what they have for a backup plan, if they have a, all of a sudden their bug population dies or whatever, I mean, they could wipe them right out.
If what dies?
Their bug population, that's what makes the gas.
Oh, okay. Yeah. All right.
Okay, then why don't we indulge this? Well, I guess before we even go to this room, Richard, you wanted to be recognized. Have you recognized yourself enough during this discussion, or is there something more that you need to say?
No, no, I mean, I just want to be recognized in case my group won't fill you in on, if you have questions.
So you're all set?
I'm all set. Can ask anyone else.
Okay. All right. Let us just put this aside for a few minutes and continue on, um, with item eight, which is the appointments, and I'll read a, um, memo from Mr. Walco to us in regard to appointment to the Dalton Housing Authority. I hereby recommend for your ratification the appointment of Thomas J. Callahan, Jr. of 306 North Street to the Dalton Housing Authority, DHA, for a term to expire on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. Please be advised that the DHA has been without its state appointee since two thousand fourteen. The recently enacted Municipal Modernization Act, Section 216, which amended Section Five of Chapter 121B, provides that municipalities may make such appointments if the state does not fill the vacancy within one hundred and twenty days. Executive Director Sue Gregory, letter of recommendation is attached. Thank you for your consideration of this appointment.
A motion?
May I have that?
Okay. I make a motion to appoint Thomas Callahan, Jr. of 306 North Street to Dalton Housing Authority, DHA, for a term to expire on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made, and second, is there any discussion? I'd just like to say that, uh, thanks to Tom, he's, uh, he always seems to be an asset to our town in a variety of, uh, positions, uh, from the school to actively working with the town. So, thank you, Tom.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. All righty.
Mr. Chairman?
So...
I have Mr. Zach Holden, speakerphone here, and you can talk directly to him, if I'm not interrupting whatever you're...
No, that's, we just, we just did the appointment.
Okay. Zach?
Yes?
Okay.
I'm here.
You're on here with the Dalton Select Board, the chairman, John Bartels.
Hi, Zach. This is John Bartels. We were wondering about the, uh, time of connection of, uh, your project. Now, you're already mechanically done?
Yes.
And it's just a matter of connecting to the grid?
Yes, we have two projects, one in Hatfield, the Dalton Farm, and one at Rockwood in Granville.
Yeah.
And the, and the Granville project, yes, is producing power, that's up and running, and, um, it should be connected to the grid by September.
By September? You have a, uh, you don't have any particular date? This is just a, well, at the, at the, at the most, it's going to take until September. It could be earlier?
I was told September by the developer from the utility company. So the utility company said September.
Okay, all right.
And so, yeah, it's, it's all on them these days with, with these net metering projects. They slow it up a lot.
Okay.
But yes, they are going to be interconnected by September.
Okay, all right.
And, and then the other question Ken asked me was about like the bugs, you know, working out the inner workings of it. And as I was just about to explain to him, what is kind of nice about this situation that the Rockwood Farm is producing energy and not interconnected, is that they're able to work out those ginks before it goes live, before it goes online.
Do you know of anything that is taking place that's abnormal?
No, it's actually up and running and been working really nicely right now.
Okay.
Is what the developer told me last Friday.
Okay. Excuse me. Board members, um, additional questions?
You, you have enough, uh, the supply of the complete, uh, a hundred percent of our needs if we ask for that?
I can't answer that for sure. Yes, we do have enough, I know that for sure. But I don't know if a hundred percent would be from the Rockwood Farm in Granville.
Right, but that other one isn't quite ready, is that correct?
That's correct. But that one, because of the way it's being, uh, because of the paperwork and everything going through, that one in Hatfield, at Dalton Farm, won't be much long after the Granville project. So it may be late September or October.
Okay. So both of your projects may be hooked up by the beginning of October?
Yes.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any good, John? Ken? Zach, uh, thank you for your time.
Sure.
We'll let you know, uh, our decision, uh, after our meeting.
Okay.
All right?
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sure.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
I think I turned it off. I hit the red button. So we have a system that we could benefit from sometime just prior to or at the same time you're mechanically complete. That system will produce or will allow us if we go with all of our credits at seventeen and a half percent for ten years. So...
The only benefit I see of our system is that you get an additional ten years plus a five-year extension if you want.
The one thing honestly, and it's me, it's, I understand what you're saying. I've never been really crazy about that long of a term, um, knowing how drastically things change in a very short amount of time. And improvements I would think would take place. To me, to me, ten years more appealing than twenty or twenty-five.
To me, to me, 10 years more appealing than 20 or 25. And if I can, if I can gain that additional savings during that time period, which is quite a bit over the 10-year period, I think it's beneficial to the town. That's my opinion.
What happens if they say they can do this and it doesn't happen, we go with them on a timely manner? Is there any penalties involved in this for the town?
I don't remember what the contract says.
And I don't remember exactly, but if they can't produce, then we're not obligated, of course, to do something else.
Same thing, same thing would happen.
Right. And both of these contracts.
With both contracts, I would think.
Yeah.
Ask Ken a question. Ken, refresh my memory, what happened to our original decision to split the baby, so to speak?
Oh, you were here last week, John. What has happened because of some unfortunate events, Mr. Viner, he couldn't get, complete his system on time, he can explain it better than I do. So because it's going to be online later, he can no longer offer us a 17 and a half percent, he can do it, but it's got to be a 15%, that's why the differential analysis.
But that option is still open to us, though, if we want to split it.
Sure, yeah.
But it would, but it would just be 15.
Yeah, I understand, I just didn't know what happened to our original decision.
So that, that's why we're discussing it again, because we hadn't anticipated this happening.
Yep.
So you have to make a decision to accept the lesser benefits to do what we originally planned on doing.
Any other comments?
Yeah, we were criticized by certain members of the community, I won't mention her name, that we, when we made our original decision, we were going to lose out on $7,500 a year or something like that.
I, yeah, I.
Yeah. So I mean, I realize the position that Mr. Viner's in through no fault of his own, but as a matter of good faith, I still would like to stay with the original deal and split it 50/50.
I agree with John, I have a hard time putting all our eggs in one basket, to be honest with you.
John Bartels or John Boyle?
John.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
No, no, they're all over the place. All right, I'm, would that be feasible with your organization?
Yes.
If the board still agreed to split it? I mean, I realize it'd be a time delay and perhaps a small financial penalty, or we would incur, but to me, you, your organization has acted in good faith and answered every one of our questions every step of the way, and you've been here. Now, the cow, the cow factory, somebody came one time for something else and spoke about it, he was here for the electric company, so.
Well, we wouldn't really lose money, we would just extend it out.
We're going to lose money in 10 years.
Under the new, if we, if we don't go 100% with the cow.
We don't go 100% with the cow, we lose $15,000 in 10 years.
And we start collecting sooner with that, with the cow, if everything worked with the system.
Well, it seems to be working now, and they're, they're running it.
That's what they're saying, right. I mean, if that, if it was true that it was going to work and it was going to be less expensive, I, I think we'd have, we'd have to go with that. The question is, is it really, you know, that foolproof, or are we taking a chance? Would we be better off taking a little bit less and having two alternatives, the insurance extra worthwhile, the lost cost, the, the lost savings?
We seem to be taking a chance either way.
Right.
Because of the system or that we would be under, depending on if it's the SREC or if it's a SMART program, could depend on what our benefit would be, because you said it could be lower than 15% depending on what happens over the next few months.
Well, I was speaking more about the uncertainties, that things can go wrong with any, anything that's producing electricity by digestion, I mean, at some point, something can go wrong and it just not be available, it just isn't producing the gas.
Well, I thought this was a proven.
Well, it, it, it does work quite a bit of the time, but they are just starting out, things can go wrong. I think, Ed, you're reinforcing Bob's point that it'd be suspect to put all our eggs in one basket. It's a gamble, actually, because we would, if, if, if it were to work well, the cow power would have worked well, we would, and, and be able to reduce 100%, there would be more of a savings and sooner to the town.
Just for 10 years, though, that's just for 10.
Well, but, but John Bartel's point is very well taken, 10 years is a long time in this technology now.
I don't foresee them, I can't, can't believe if, if in fact they would invest in this type of system and run it for 10 years, I can't see where they would discontinue it in 10 years especially, you know, and I would imagine that the technology is going to change and improve where they'll upgrade their system, I would think, and continue on.
Even the sole, everything's going to be very, I think, different in 10 years.
And, and the possibility of us staying on at that rate is, that is a possibility, I would also think.
So obviously, a case can be made either way, but apparently we have to decide, is that what Ken is telling us, right? We need to make a decision.
Yeah, we postponed it because we can only take this option for one more week.
So we, we need to. Well, I was going to say, to be clear, I'm in favor of splitting it, but whatever the board chooses.
Well, I'm, I'm not, I guess, obviously, since the way I've been talking, I would rather go 100% with the cow power for the 10-year term. So with that, unless somebody else wants to make a comment on that or, or state their feelings, we can have a motion either way, whatever you want to do, I don't know what you want to do.
Okay, I'll make the motion, we go 100% with cow power.
I'll second the motion.
The motions are made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? One in opposition?
Yeah.
Motion passed. So we'll let.
Zach, no. I'm sorry, this is really a hard decision, you know.
No, I, I appreciate that.
The case can be made either way.
I appreciate that, yeah. And our apologies for the delay and the change.
Thanks.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah.
And trying to work with us.
Yeah. I know it's difficult working with a municipality, so, thanks again.
Okay. Have a good evening.
You too.
Thank you.
Item nine, which is Wacona's building, yeah, Building Committee, School Committee reports. There is nothing to report since last week, with the exception of there's a meeting for both committees this Thursday, 4:30 for the Building Committee at Wacona and the library and the, the School Committee, I believe, is a meeting at 7:00 at Craneville School, and after those meetings, I'll, I'll give a report. So which brings us to Special Town Meeting Draft Waugh.
This should be the final draft of the warrant.
Is this draft two?
This is draft two.
Okay.
Yes.
Wanted to make sure that we're in draft three.
I'm going to just point out the new articles, you can stop me if you have any questions on the other articles, but let's begin with Article Three. So Article Three is Request for Borrowing Authorization for the Design of Dalton Division Road, now that it's been approved, the debt exclusion was approved by the voters at the annual town election, that's Article Three. Article Four is the next new article, and similarly, it's a bor, a Request for Borrowing Authorization for Extraordinary Source System Expenses, this is meant for the.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Want to go back?
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
What's the amount that we'll be asking?
Probably $800,000, that's the last estimate I had from.
Because that was, that was on the ballot, right?
That was eight, eight hundred thousand dollars.
All right, thank you.
Ken, a quick question. We're authorizing this money for engineering for the Dalton Division Road project, exactly what does the pro, the proposal encompass now as far as Dalton Division Road goes? Obviously, it's pretty straightforward for the straight straits of a new surface sidewalk, but what about the interchange? What, what are we determined, what direction are we in?
No, no final decision has been made, but I anticipate that will be part of the design, I mean, we can't, can't really complete that roadway the way we want to unless we deal with the intersection.
Yeah, but don't we have to decide what we want to happen there, till the engineers can carry it out?
Well, I think it'll be worked out in the design phase, so we don't want to, we don't want to prejudge what we're doing there, and we showed a hypothetical, in a very preliminary work, we showed a hypothetical traffic circle or road or something like that, that may or be, may or may not be the final solution when the engineers take a close look at it, maybe there's not enough land there to do that, maybe they'll have a different idea, but in one way or the other, I think we have to deal with the intersection to make it function.
Yeah, well.
The way it should.
We had several different theories and we looked into those and a great deal, we never really came to a conclusion, I just don't understand which direction the engineers can go in to without input from this board and Pittsfield.
Well, it'll be an interactive, you know, we're going to start looking at various design scenarios, particularly for the intersection, the road is kind of straightforward.
Yeah.
But to tell the engineers to go out and design that now, I think is prejudging their studies, we want to see, they're going to look at it, they're going to throw around various different scenarios, whether they're feasible or not, and then they're, we're going to get some presentations on that and then make a final decision, and you're right, nothing will be done along that roadway without close cooperation with the City of Pittsfield.
Which brings me to my second question, how much are they contributing towards the engineering?
Zero right now.
Zero? And half the road's on their side of the street.
Probably more of the residents are on their side.
The actual right-of-way is Dalton.
The intersection, is it?
Well, yeah, it is, with the exception of, you know, if you, if you draw, as soon as you start turning the corner from Division Road to William Street, that's where it is.
But I just think we should be asking Pittsfield to contribute to this endeavor, seeing that the benefits, most of the benefits can accrue to their residents that are near a community and the intersection.
What happened with South Street?
Well, South Street.
Because a lot of that intersect, more of that intersections in Pittsfield than it was in Dalton, or is in Dalton.
Well, we paid for the design, the city paid for the takings in Pittsfield.
That would be the same thing here?
Well, we don't know, because we haven't asked Pittsfield whether they'll contribute to the engineering. So this is, this is, this is different in that we have a whole neighborhood of City of Pittsfield residents living just on the other side of the right-of-way, so it's a very different project from South Street, except that you have intersections that affect both communities. So in there, we cooperated with Pittsfield, but we did pay for the design, we didn't pay for the construction, of course, it's funded by federal aid, state federal aid, but the city had to do the takings in its own jurisdiction and pay for those takings, we did not pay for them.
So in this project, we could end up paying for takings that are actually in Pittsfield?
When, now, again, I can't say definitively, but the right-of-way is so large there, there's no anticipated takings in Pittsfield, maybe there'll be a construction.
Down there, the old, like the.
Yeah, the, the right-of-way is 66 feet, it's an old colonial layout, and there's enough right-of-way, we were told in the preliminary design, that they did not expect to impact the City of Pittsfield at all. I mean, it impacts the residents along there, but all of the property lies within Dalton's jurisdiction.
I think these are the questions that the citizens of town are going to be asking.
Oh, I think you're right.
All right.
I agree.
And there was a lot of skepticism about this vote last Monday, only passed by a hater, it was a very limited turnout, not a real reflection of the community, I just trying to anticipate some of these issues that are.
Those are, those are good questions.
So all this does here is authorize a bond borrowing?
Yes, just as was done for both South and Green Time.
And will be 800,000?
800,000.
Five-year state housing?
Most likely. I think we can only, unless it was rolled into a bond issue for the construction of the roadway, it would have to be limited to five years. Thanks, Ken.
Anything else?
Any other questions on three? Okay, we don't yet know what it's going to cost us to remedy this situation down at the bottom of the street with the emergency sewer repair under the High Bridge, so some of that money may have to be borrowed, I don't know yet. I can simply tell you that we've received emergency authorization from the Department of Revenue to expend in excess of appropriated funds, we're going to have to do that, and I asked for authority to spend up to 150,000, which DOR gave us, and that's my estimate when you get all done, and the most expensive part of this, of course, is the emergency bypass pumping that's going on, but the repair itself could be 40,000 dollars.
How much of labor costs are going to be in that thing?
There'll be, a lot of it is labor, because we have to.
Because they're what, 24/7, right?
24/7, two people, yes, obviously. So we may not have enough in our source stabilization fund, we may indeed have to borrow to pay Article seven, similarly, deals with sewer expenses, it's the last new article, and we have really three appropriations that we might want to draw from the sewer stabilization account. One, we owe Pittsfield almost 100,000 dollars for sewage treatment, we've got the sewer emergency that we just spoke about, and we had the Daly Avenue Sewer, which went complete, you all remember, and we fixed that, so.
What's the cost of that, you know? Because our crew did it.
I saw some of the bills, I'm, I'm, this is just a guess, though, I think, I thought it was like 60,000 or something.
What would it cost if a contractor did that?
You know, I don't know.
I bet we would not waste that.
Well, it'd be all done in prevailing rages, plus the contractor's markup, on emergency basis, I believe, very expensive, very expensive. The last, no, I didn't, I don't think there was anything else, I thought I reworded, but, no, I, I reworded, Article seven was originally just appropriate money to pay the city's bill, but now we have three issues, and that's it for new articles on the warrant. So if you see fit to approve this, subject to Town Council review, I hope the Town Council will review, again, it has to be posted towards the end of the first week in June, and we aren't meeting again until the 11th unless a special meeting is called.
Do we need to approve the location?
Yes, we should, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, and the location is Mesekus on June 25th at 7:00 PM. Why don't we start there? Do I have a motion for that?
Sure. I make a motion that we set the town hall, the town meeting at Mesekus Regional Middle School Monday, June 25th, it should be 2018 at 7:00 PM.
Good catch.
Yes.
Did you see that count?
What's that?
On the warrant, it says 2017. We're only a year late on this one.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll second the 2018 meeting.
Okay, so moved in seconds. Okay, so moved in second to have the meeting at Nessus on the 25th. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, now, approval of the warrant?
I make a motion we approve the warrant as presented.
I'll second that.
Motion to amend, second to approve the special town meeting warrant for June 25th, 2018. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Could I ask, is it possible, and this is only because, this isn't the first time it's been asked of, of me, or not of me, or why isn't it? Can this be put on our website?
Oh, yeah. Usually do put them up.
Good thing.
So this is approved by council?
I didn't see, well, I didn't see, I couldn't find where it was for the annual town meeting.
Yeah, the ATM was updated.
Was it? Is it in, is it on the page as soon as you open it up, or where is it?
I think, I think Bill put a link to it. I think it's a special town meeting warrant. Click on it and we brought it up.
Okay, all right.
Or it's an annual town meeting warrant.
I saw it on there, but you had to do a couple clicks.
Did you?
Yeah.
Well, if Bill can do something that's-
Can ask him.
Right there on the homepage where people don't have to go really looking.
Near the top. It needs to be near the, yeah.
Yeah.
Where do you think?
When you get to the homepage, you want to be quickly, people don't go all the way down to the bottom of the, of the homepage, you know, the-
Could be like a better-
Some banner up the top.
Yes, exactly. That's right.
Well, if that can be done, that would be great.
Yeah.
Okay. Nice. Okay, review of the marijuana zoning bylaw. All we got in our packets was the one that we had, we had it, we had it last meeting too?
Yes.
And then the one that were changes recommended by town manager. There were just a few. And Ken, I'll hand it over to you for explanation of the corrections.
The planning board, there are some slight changes that the planning board requested when they met on this last week. Maybe everyone would like to, feels like they'd like to speak to that. Otherwise, I will-
I'll let you speak, Ken.
All right.
You were there.
What you have here, so what I've given you then are two versions. One with the changes, again, slight changes requested by the planning board. The planning board did want the select boards to see this. And then I suggested a few changes. I really didn't get to discuss with the planning board last week. I had some ideas that might make the bylaw better. And what I provided you also is with a copy of the zoning map, so you can see what we're talking about a little more. And I put the biggest copy of the zoning map we have up here. I'll point what I'm talking about as we go through it. And the biggest issue revolves around where we want to have retail, really, really retail marijuana establishments in the town, or marijuana package stores, whatever.
Ken, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Has anybody approached town yet to, on any establishments?
We had an inquiry quite a while back, but it wasn't very official at all. Someone who was a former resident, lived in Eastern Mass, was interested in doing something with family property in town, but that's probably a year ago. So I'm looking at page two, part C, designated locations for ME, meaning marijuana establishments. And there's a whole, slightly way of explanation, there's a whole bunch of different marijuana establishments. And if you look on page one, they're defined. It says marijuana establishments, which is a marijuana cultivator, craft marijuana cooperative, marijuana product manufacturer, marijuana retailer, independent testing laboratory, marijuana research facility, or a marijuana transporter. So here, we're really talking about where we want to have any of these enterprises in our community. What I've also provided you with is the page out of our zoning bylaw for office retail and consumer service establishment, so you'll see better how similar type uses are treated. Particularly, on the first page, you'll see under number two, we have stores, sales room showroom, conduct of retail businesses. Now, any of those other, the way the planning board has defined this, in our community right now, retail establishments can go in any business or industrial zone, sometimes with a special permit. So if you look at two on this zoning with principal permitted uses, you have a B1, B2, I1, and I2. There's Ps there under two. That means they're permitted simply with a building permit. In PIDD district, it's permitted with a special permit from the planning board. Those are any type of retail trade. So anything here in purple, in light purple, and pink, those are our retail, the purple are industrial zones, and the kind of the pink or flesh colored, I don't know what you call it, kind of pink, this is salmon color, salmon and pink are business zones. And these salmon colored ones in the center of town are so-called B2. B1 is out here on the outskirts of town, down there, that's Green Ridge Plaza, and just so you know, here's Berkshire Organics, that's a B2. This is Green Ridge Plaza, B1. Dalton Depot, that's a B1. B1, that's where Country Corners is, B1, Wading Energy. So my first suggestion is that there was quite a bit of discussion with the planning board about what happens. Planning board would allow agricultural uses in our agricultural zones. That's R1, three acres or more, it's all the light yellow. So you could have a marijuana establishment, but what happens when you get out here, or any of these areas where you have boundaries between the R1, and this is R4, I think, and R2 over here? What happens? So the suggestion that the planning board finally come up with after kicking it around is, this is 200 foot setback here, or 200 feet. The boundary line is 200 feet from Route 9 or North Street. So they said, well, maybe it should be 500 feet. My first suggestion on page two, C1, is that maybe it ought to be 500 feet from the boundary line. So it's 200 feet, then another 500 feet, or 700 feet. But you can have establishments more than 700 feet back from Route 9, or back from any of these other zones, these residential zones. These are 200 feet to and long here. This is, this is Gulf Road and High Street, you know, the Highway Garage here, Warren Landfill, and the other residential areas that abut that. So anywhere that there's a budding residential zones in R1 or agricultural zones, you'd have to be 500 feet from the adjacent right-of-way. And the planning board only wanted to do that where there was a R4 frontage, R4. So I put all the residential zones in. So it says that in R1 lot that has R2, R3, or R4 frontage shall be setback 500 feet from any adjacent district boundary instead of the right-of-way.
So it just makes an additional buffer?
It makes an additional buffer and adds in all the residential zones. So it's a buffer larger than the planning board discussed, and adds in the other residential zones where you have these adjacent uses of different types of residential density. The second thing I recommended was that, and that's number two, C, was that a marijuana retailer may be sighted in a B1, now I1 and I2 districts, I1 district store, just B1 and I1. So marijuana retailers could go here, 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 this light purple here, that's I1, down here, and that would be it.
No B2?
No B2. B2 keeps it away from Main Street. This is only marijuana retailing that we're talking about. You could be further restrictive, want it to be more restrictive, and just limit it to B1 zones. So there's only one, two, this is Dalton Depot again, Green Ridge Plaza. Those are B1 zones. The way it's set up now, marijuana retailers would be allowed, just like ordinary retailers, with a special proviso, special permits all around.
Yeah. Ken, in relation to that, I don't see it here, but one of these proposals from the planning board or somebody regarding marijuana retailers, their hours were limited to 8:00 P.M.
Right. So that's another point that the planning board discussed, because they had, I think they had them hours 8 to 8. The consensus opinion of the planning board was, let's look at what alcohol retailers can do. And so that's changed in here.
Okay. Is ours 2:00 A.M.?
I think it's, what does it say here?
Retailers?
Yep.
It'd be 10, isn't it 10:00 P.M.?
No, retail-
Yeah, all alcohol permit thing.
Yeah, yeah, that would be like, that'd be like a bar, right, Ken?
Okay. On premise it's 2:00 A.M. On premise it's 2:00 A.M. Package, package stores off premise, like Kelly's is 11.
Right. So the idea was to model on what is done for alcohol, package stores, alcohol retailers.
Right. Great. Because I saw that 8:00 and a half, I thought that was awful punitive.
Yeah, 8:00 A.M. to 11:00, Monday through Saturday, and 10:00 to 11:00 on Sunday.
And are these hours, are they going to be set by the planning board or by the Board of Appeals?
It'll be set in the bylaw.
In the bylaw?
It's also proposed. It'll be hardwired as a-
So a retail establishment hours will be predicated or based on a off-premise alcohol sales?
Yes.
Whether it be, you know, which is a-
That's what planning board asked the town planner to do. She got some information and she wrote it in here. So it's written in here.
He said, what other objection? You're only going to have B1 and I1.
Yes, that's, that's what I'm suggesting, B1, I1.
I1's my backyard.
By the tracks-
Maybe she asked for zone change.
No, hey, right in my backyard is I1, not you.
From up to the, from your-
It's only residential, the first 200 feet.
Yeah, right here, it's 200 feet. So what else I'm, the only I1 is here.
Also, if my house is in I1.
So I1 is here, and it's adjacent to the B1 zone.
Yeah, you might have a couple.
So you'd have to go 700 feet off of who's the town next to you. But you may not even be in there. There's only 200, there's only 200 feet here.
Yeah, there's only 200 feet of residential.
Right, and you're not allowed, well, and you're not allowed in I2, so it wouldn't be in here. It'd only be this spot here would be allowed, if you go I1.
Gee. That makes a lot of sense.
That's where the VF is.
Yeah, that's right. Exactly, the VF, that's right. The other suggestion I've made is in point five, under C. This is setback from schools and places of worship, daycare facilities, libraries, and so forth. And the last line said, special permit granting authority, which in all cases would be the zoning board of appeals in this version, could modify or waive the requirement. My suggestion is they could add to the requirement, not modify or waive it. And there was some suggest, talk about that at the meeting of the planning board.
Yeah, that's very clear. Right now in Pittsfield, it hasn't even been enacted yet, they're in a big hassle about this provision. There's adult learning center?
Yeah.
Well, they claim that fits the criteria for exclusionary of the 500 feet on South Street.
Yeah.
So it's already a card issue and they haven't even started yet.
Now, indeed, the designated number of MEs, and this was, I've made the change here, but this is, it was a language that the, that the planning board wanted. Just says the number of marijuana retailers shall not exceed the number of all alcohol licenses within the town for retail sale of alcoholic beverages not to be drunk on, drunk on permanent premises. So we have three package stores in town, you could have up to three retailers.
Well, what about the beer and wine people?
We got three. I thought we had five.
All alcohol.
Huh? All alcohol?
Yeah.
I thought we had five.
All alcohol, just three. And remember, one was by special legislation. Based on our population, we can only have two all alcohol because our population declined. And then we went and got special legislation, that was Masvark, Green Ridge Plaza. So it's Kelly's, I think it's Country Corners, and Masvark. Those are the only three all alcohol.
Okay. All right. I don't know where it came up, but five.
Yeah, well, you know, you've got a couple of beer and wine. Berkshire Organics got a beer and wine. General Stores got a beer and wine.
Okay.
I'm not sure what. So that's five.
Thank you.
So, but you said only three would be allowed?
Yes. We could have as many, we could have as little as one. Has to be no, no fewer than 20% of what you have. So I guess it would be one.
It makes a lot of sense. I mean, you could use the question you're going to come up with.
Yeah.
Yeah, seems very sensible.
So on page three, there's, these are just textual changes in said city, we changed it to town, clarified, not while you'll see, just to make a good translation, just had to be 11:00 P.M. it's supposed to be. And the only, well, there's two more changes. On page six, annual inspections. And this is clarifying language again, because each marijuana enterprise is supposed to be inspected a year after they go into operation, just like, you know, entertainment places are inspected. Now, if the building inspector and the health agent, who are the inspectors under this proposal, establish an annual routine at the same time of year, you can see they might not hit it in a year. So if somebody gets licensed in January, and they're not due again to next January, but they start a fall inspection program like they do with alcohol establishments, you know, bars and so forth, then they may not get it until the next fall. They may skip the first inspection and may roll over into the next year. So that's just a, but a leeway for the inspectors, so they can establish a kind of a routine program.
Where do these inspectors originate? Does it town function?
Yeah, or not function.
It's not as function as the state? Cannabis control commission?
No. No, this is just, it might be our health inspector and a building inspector.
And we gotta pay for it.
The building inspector and the fire chief go out now and they inspect bars and other places like that. It's the same kind of a regime.
The eighth, but the Alcoholics Beverage Control Commission, that they're inspectors in.
From time to time, they come out, right. We, I don't, we don't know, at least I don't know, what the cannabis control commission is going to do.
It'd be next as they did it.
Yeah.
Same with their idea.
Right.
Conspiracy expense.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
The last change on page seven that I'm suggesting is that the community impact fee be raised to the maximum of 3%. Planning board suggested 2% gross sales. The impact fee goes away after a period of time, so I think it's part of the host community fee, so-called. And it can only be leveled, levied for a certain amount of years, not per two.
Can, can that go up to three? I thought two was, I, on retail sales, it could be three, but I didn't.
And the state, as far as, I recall, I went back and looked at the law.
Okay.
3%.
Yeah, very good.
I'm pretty sure I got it right.
Yeah, it's, so it's down, it's down.
Okay, so, though, that's the really, the biggest decision here is where you would like to see these marijuana establishments. Now, if you're anything other than a retailer, you can go into any zone that allows you to be here. Of course, again, agricultural uses in the agricultural zones. Sometimes they treat the growers, if you're in an enclosed building, like a manufacturer. So they may be in any of these districts. They'll all be by special permit. One of the things, though, that I would like to see preserved is the planned industrial development district. We designed that to be an expedited permitting district, because before, every industrial use was permitted by special permit. So we created PIDD, provided for planning for enterprises and expedited permitting. So even in a PIDD zone, it would be by special permit, and it would, and it kind of sets aside what we were really trying to do when we created the PIDD zone, is to make normal industrial uses happen more quickly in town by means of site plan review rather than a special permit process.
Ken, can you just run through and get where the B1 zones are?
Yeah, right here, John.
Yeah.
It's Cleveland Road, it's Wading Energy up here.
Okay.
Country Corners down here.
Yeah.
Green Ridge Plaza over here, and then Dalton Depot. Remember, the Dalton Depot zone got changed, it's a B1.
Yeah.
Remember that? Remember that?
So do I. So, is that a whole lot of options?
No.
Okay. Is it, we're that, considering that a marijuana retail establishment has to be a freestanding building. It can be a tenant, like say, we're talking about Greenridge Plaza, it could be.
I think it could be.
Yeah. I mean, there's no, if I understand, it doesn't have to be owned.
Yeah, okay. Well, it doesn't have to be a free, freestanding.
If it meets the requirements of the bylaw and is permitted by a special permit process. And remember, the zoning board of appeals is set out in this plan to be the zone, the special permit granting authority. As they are for most special permits in town. Planning board does a few.
So this has to go to a public hearing, no? Or just to tell?
Yes. Yes. Planning board plans on the public hearing on June 20th.
Five days before the meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, this, to me, I'm looking at this and I can, I can sense that there's going to be a lot of discussion on where these places can go and debate on, you know, this is what we need, this is what we really want to see.
I think most of the debate will be at the town meeting, because people don't show up for the planning board. They don't even know.
But that's the time, that's the time to change it.
I, absolutely. I'm just telling you that we've had, um, many, uh, public meetings and nobody shows up.
Where are the meetings going to be at?
Well, it would, it would be, it would be in this room.
In this room?
Yes.
Ah, that'd be plenty of room.
Well, the last, the last public hearing you had on the marijuana issue, I think I was the only one in the audience.
Okay, I stand corrected. I thought there was nobody. I apologize. I apologize. I apologize. But, but, you know, we, we don't really get a lot of participation. And then later on, as, as the planning board, I hear things, people say, well, why didn't somebody tell us that, or these things were coming down?
Yeah, this is, this is important.
No. If you don't mind my saying so, Mr. Chairman, there were way, an interesting issue because I meant it when we're discussing the warrant, to raise that question with you. Do you want to move the marijuana articles or leave them where they are? They're now, the articles dealing with marijuana are 14 and 15. Now, the 16 articles I'm moving on.
Well, where would you want to move?
Yeah, I was just going to say, move them.
No.
We can't move them? Oh, up front?
I, I don't know. I think there's usually more action on whatever, the first couple items, and then people get exhausted.
Before the money issues, you want to bring it up? Is that what you want to do?
Yeah, I, I, just your own personal feeling about how the debate is going to go.
I would, I, I would just hope that there would be some, um, wow, some attendance at the public hearing. So if things need to, can, after the public hearing, can things be changed as for the law?
Um, it.
Or as for the draft, without us accepting it, or?
When the bylaw is published, when the warrant is published, rather, we have to put a version of the bylaw on file with the town clerk, because that's how, because that's how the warrant article states.
Yeah.
So it has to be substantially in the form of, of the proposed bylaw on file with the town clerk. Yes, the planning board has to issue a report, as per the statutory findings. I, they may say they want to do things differently, but I think that's one of the reasons the planning board want to comment from the select board, so that they could change the bylaw, the, the hearings, or the proposed bylaw.
Well, I like what I see, but I, I hate to make it a real opinion out of without the, some type of input from.
Well, I think we got a lot of that at the last town meeting.
Right.
Well, and you just, I think the overall consensus was, they just wanted us to do something. Show good faith, because we sat at it for a year and a half without doing a thing. And then they asked for another moratorium. So I think their frustration was, do something. And they forced our hand by voting down the F8. So I think it's going to be all right, John.
Okay.
I don't think it's a, a really big issue in town, because Pittsfield's going to be saturated with these places. There's license in 38 places.
We won't get three retailers, uh, trying to sell marijuana here.
You can guarantee someone will be on the Dalton Town Line. So it's not going to.
Well, yeah, I, I.
It's not going to be a big business for us, you know?
But that's the hope of our citizens.
It's hope for some of the citizens, yeah, sure. But no, it isn't going to be, it's not going to save us from some of our expenses that are up.
Pittsfield, 38 retailers.
Well, as for.
It's insane.
Quite frankly, if I moved it anywhere, it would be right after Article Four. But, you know, to get, to get these larger controversial.
You, you're probably right. You know, you, we should do the controversial ones first.
Put them up front.
Yeah, and, 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 to make sure that most people stay.
Yep, yes. I would agree with that.
I would do it after those, after those three, if, with the consensus of the board, I guess.
Yeah.
So you want to do one through three first?
No, one through.
I like to, I think it's advisable anyway to group articles of a similar nature together.
Say that again.
No law or rule, articles of a similar nature together. Typically, when I'm drafting this, I don't know how to do it.
Well, I was thinking after Article Four.
14 and 15 go together. And then 12, 13, 14, and 15 are all, you know, the kind of zoning, they're zoning and, uh, there's no magic to it. Anywhere.
Okay, just, just leave it.
Ah, John, I think you're in a.
You know, I, you know, I, I would like.
What's wrong with putting it after, putting them after Article Four?
Nothing. But if you, you had a plan here and this is how you like to set these things up.
Yeah.
But I just want to get it up front with these other ones so that we have the most attendance. Special town meetings sometimes aren't.
If, if you want, yeah, if you want a fair number of attendees, then people who came specifically to deal with the marijuana issue will have to stay until we get to them. Or the first four articles, if you want them there. But we have, again, 13, 14, and 15 all deal with marijuana.
But if you make them stay till the very end, and they don't understand the issues in the beginning because they don't want to, they have no interest in it, it could throw a monkey wrench in something that's important.
The other danger is too, that people who came for the financial articles or Dalton Division Road or something like that, and if they leave, then you have a narrower group.
Oh.
Like.
I guess either way, we could win or lose.
13, 14, and 15 to after Article Four. So it's 13, we become Article Five.
Well, that was the original suggestion. And it seemed like the board was in consensus to do that.
That's what it'll do.
So let's do that.
Yeah. Okay, so Article 13 is going to become number five.
Digest.
Right, so.
Article 13, okay, I got it. You got it.
25, 67.
You got it. Okay, we good?
Yep.
Well, we have the consideration of authorizing remote participation for committees. And Ken gave us a, uh, well, an explanation of the law. It seemed pretty straightforward. And it's just us authorizing it. Am I correct?
Yep, and.
And allowing it, and we can always rescind it.
And always rescind it.
At any time.
Also have to, um, decide by what means of the current technology you're going to authorize it being done, all of them, none of them. If you look specifically at the regulation which I attached.
Mm-hmm.
The second page of the regulation, it's six. Says technology. So it's telephone, internet, satellite enabled, enabled audio or video conferencing, or any other technology that's clearly audible to one another.
Well, we have the ability to use the phone, which we've done with not board members, but other people like we did tonight. The only other ability we may have is Skype.
Skype.
Through our laptop computer. Is there any other that we?
Yeah, the most likely one we would use is telephone. But if you authorize the use of any, um, any approved methodology in the, in the, um, CMR or in the regulations, then we'll have covered it if we're able to do it some other way.
Well, that, does that mean we have to have the ability to do that? That's what, or do we?
I don't think so.
Because if we don't have the ability to do one, if someone wanted to use that, it doesn't restrict us.
It says in C, under six C. The public body shall determine which of the acceptable methods may be used by its members. So that, that may even be, and there's a, of course, TTT, but it doesn't apply. So this may be, you know, and reading this again, this may be up to the individual public body that's going to use, um, remote participation. But it may be, it may be helpful to boards and committees to define what, how it is they could do this.
Well, can you get a consensus from the boards and committees what they would, what they would want? Would that be prudent?
It may be easier just to say, because we have so many of them.
Yeah.
Is that, you, if you decide to authorize this, then you may use telephone, internet, satellite enabled audio, as we have the ability to employ those means.
Okay.
And then it'll give them some clear directions so they won't go.
Okay, all right.
And, yeah.
Any questions for Ken on this?
Nope.
Take a motion.
Okay. Welcome to accept their remote call-ins or whatever, as presented by Ken.
I'll second that.
Remote participation. By board members?
Yep.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The post, abstentions? Thanks, Ken. And the updates.
I'll try to get through these quickly, stop me if you have any questions. Um, we're ready to go. The online credit card payment system, uh, our tax collector, Melissa Davis, surveyed a bunch of Berkshire County towns, in fact, 15 county towns. They all use Unibank. It's because, you know, Unibank comes out of Worcester, and they specialize in municipal bank, and we in fact have an account with Unibank. There's only one community that didn't use Unibank out of the 15. And that includes our fire district also uses Unibank, that's the city of Pittsfield. Unibank doesn't charge us, doesn't charge the town anything more. And each of the towns that participate do it in the same manner. And it does mean that the person using their credit card has to pay his credit card fee. Okay? So, uh, we're ready to go. And we'll have it up and running by, um, because we already have an account with Unibank. Our payments on the online permitting system already go through Unibank.
Is that fee schedule as we saw?
As far as I know, it is. And we would, you know, we would make sure that that's up on the website, what the fees would be and how you can access it, so that, you know, people wouldn't be. In fact, she was showing me something. It links into a Unibank, um, website when you click on it, and then it shows you, tells you, um, you know, what, how to participate and what the fees are. So people know before they pay with the credit card that they're subject to a fee. The only other thing I have to do is there's a, there's an agreement we signed with Unibank, and I'll have to scrutinize it a little bit more carefully, who we signed off on it. But it's cancelable at any time. It's not for a particular term, but it's cancelable at any time, with or without cost.
Okay.
Sewer, um, repair emergency, I talked about that a little already. We had to go and get two emergency approvals, one from the Division of Capital Asset Management, uh, to, um, modify kind of the bidding requirements, the advertising requirements for a bid. And we did that. We sent out, uh, responses. You may have seen that in the inbox, the, the request for quotations. Let's do Friday. We ultimately talked about going to DOR. So, um, Ty and Bond is going to follow up with the, all of the contractors, eight of them that they've spoken to, and let us know, um, how they responded to it. If, whether they're interested in bidding on it. And they'll, they have to complete the work within 14 days after they've been awarded the contract. Uh, last week, on the Housatonic Street construction, construction team, we met with Mast Dot to discuss outstanding, um, punch list, by our own punch list. And the biggest issue, remember, was the sewer manholes. There's probably, I think there's four or five that didn't really meet specifications or down too far. Uh, turns out, though, that there's only really one practical way to deal with it. One way is to cut, cut around the manhole, raise up the frame, but then you've always got this cut that's subject to leaking. Another way is to go and grind around the top of the manhole. Then you've scored the surface, there's no really repaving of it. But you, the simplest way, and probably the best way, is simply to pave over the manhole. You always know where it is, and you have to repave it from time to time. And that's what Mast Dot recommended to us, and we ended up agreeing to, to pave it. Now, if you have a different idea, I'll go back to Mast Dot.
Baltazar is going to do that.
Baltazar, yeah. I should say, all of these corrections are going to be done with, by Baltazar, without cost to the town.
Are they going to do all the manholes?
No, just the ones that don't meet specifications.
There's only four?
I thought it was four.
Huh?
Not every one, but there's, there's.
Not every one, but I've driven on the road, and I would have said I get more than four, yeah.
Yeah, you got more than four. Yeah. Part of the problem, as they explained to us, is that a lot of those manholes are in the, in the travel lane where your wheels go.
Yep.
And they should have been, in their opinion, should have been designed more off to the side. I don't know if they're working out, it might have been done practically, but that was their response to us.
Or should have been paved properly. That really gets.
Bottom line. Who's response? Baltazar or?
No, this is Mast Dot. This is their engineers.
Well, that's what you're saying, we had manholes in the wrong place?
We had a chief construction engineer and the District One Highway Director. They told us unequivocally that the surface meets their specifications. There's nothing wrong with the surface. There is something wrong with a few of the manholes. And some of the manholes on the travel lane, they shouldn't be, or in their opinion, they should have been pushed over to the side of the road.
So the engineering they're saying wasn't right?
Ken, I wish you. Which is that, I think there's a lot more than four.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I heard the number 21, but that would just.
Yeah, that's far fewer than they mentioned.
Be good. You know, Baltazar, four, that's what they'll do. Leave.
So next time they design a road, which is Mast Dot, or approve it at design, they're going to approve that, right?
Well, I, I said several times, we don't know what we don't know. We depend upon you to review the plans, and if there's something wrong to tell us, so we can get the engineers to change it. So what else is out there? There's the, the wall had water coming over during the wintertime, and our engine, GPI, is designing a solution to that. It may just involve, it might be just as simple as putting a drainage swale at the top of the wall so the water's channeled away from the wall and down the side, but they're working on that right now, at no cost to the town.
Oh.
So there are certain steep areas, again, right near the wall, where the soil's just not going to hold the hydro.
Yeah.
So they're going to put riprap there. And then there's a couple of other drainage problems they're going to, they're going to fix as well.
Well, maybe you haven't got to it yet. The lump, John Ruffly was concerned about this. The lump as you come off the bridge, the high bridge here.
No, we didn't even discuss that, John, whatever, but I'm glad you brought it up and talked about it.
The one that was there before the construction?
Yeah.
The one that's there.
They swore they were going to get rid of it.
Yeah.
But they didn't.
It's just a shame that, you know, that it got to this point. It's just a shame that, you know, that it got to this point when you think about it.
I don't know, we should wait until executive session, but what about the Bigelow issue?
Yeah, that's, and we'll discuss that.
Okay.
But what I can tell you about that is that Mast Dot will move, there's a drainage structure there.
Yep.
And there's a sewer lateral next to it. The drainage structure will be moved by Mast Dot at their expense.
Shouldn't have ever been put there. They put that, that.
Yeah.
Mr. Bigelow gave me the guide tour down there. They put that thing right next to his sewer pipe, right adjacent to it, right on it. And then, well, Balthazar broke it or whatever, but it should have never been right there anyway. Are they going to move the catch basin thing there, like up the road?
I'm not exactly sure where they're going to put it, if they're going to move it.
He said there's some kind of a water problem too. We'll talk about that later.
Yeah, that design D's actually been caught in the field. Washington Mountain Road, very quickly now. Pittsfield, you might have seen it in your inbox, Pittsfield sent us a letter, city from the mayor, that they've approved a truck ban there. Dan Filio and I are going to attend the select board meeting in Washington on the first Monday in June to discuss with them the same issue. What we, and we did contact Beckett and he had a response back saying, we asked them if we can meet with them to talk about the issue. And then just to remind, I think everybody knows this, but could remind you again that the Department of Telecommunications and Cable will be at Lenox Town Hall at 3 o'clock tomorrow to talk to public officials about spectrum and the problems we're experiencing. We sent a communication to all of the members of the Cable Advisory Committee today with a communication that came from DT.
From, I'll be there. John, Rick, Al. So there'll be four of us there.
That's great.
At least four of us.
And that's it for my updates unless anybody has any questions about any project.
About the Housatonic street thing, Ken. A resident asked me if there's anything that can be done, cord, it was on the corner of Housatonic Street and E Street, Mr. Gallagher. He's got five signs on his lawn.
Yeah.
You know, anyway, he said, yeah, so anyway, you can cut back a few of these signs, five signs indicating bike paths, uh, this, that, another thing. He's on the corner, you know, cut it down to three. Oh, there's one about the bridge, you know, he could put that down near the bridge.
Is that a narrow bridge sign or something?
Yeah. No, wait, narrow.
Narrow.
Yeah, one or the other. You know, that could be used down the road further.
Yeah.
But, uh, let's cut his kid's name.
Jim.
Yep.
Yep.
And he asked me about that. And a lot of them asked about hydroseeding. Like the first 10 feet back from the road, the hydroseeding didn't take it all in a lot of people's lawns. I says, hey, amazing to them, I don't know.
That is supposed to be redone. Well, I forgot to mention the striping that failed parts of it, so it's all supposed to be fixed.
They could go back and, you know, they could just do a coat all up and down the street 10 feet back would be good. A lot of people's lawns are tough shape, including mine.
I'll stop?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Items for future agendas, as you see, there was an amended document for that. I'm not going to go over each one. I was planning on, but in deference to the time here.
Yes.
I'm not, I'll go over this a little more in depth next time. However, two items that'll be on the agenda for the 11th on this list is in regard to the sewer system evaluation survey. And my question, Ken, the online payments, you still want to leave it on there for the next meeting?
If you're satisfied with what I told you, you don't have to discuss it. You can have it as an agenda.
Well, is for the document that we have to agree to or sign or?
That may be something, if it's something the select board needs to approve, we'll have it on there.
Okay, why don't we do it that way? Okay.
I thought you said you can sign it.
I think I may be able to sign it, I'm not sure, but I'm going to look at it and work it out.
We could authorize you to sign it.
Okay. If in fact, if in fact it could be done outside the meeting, let's still add it to your updates as for what was done.
Yeah.
So that people know and a little explanation of how it will work.
All right.
We were also going to have at the next meeting, the first meeting in June, the health care?
Yes, that's on it.
Okay, insurance.
Yep. That's on it.
Thank you.
Other than that, are there additional items to put on here?
Yeah, John, one.
Yep.
I don't know exactly how to phrase this, maybe it's a wait until executive session, but we talked informally among ourselves over this issue of people using town property, unauthorized use of town property.
Yep.
And we were, thought we might notify them that you should cease and desist from.
I think that's an executive session thing we should, we should talk, talk about.
Yep. But do we have to put it on the agenda for, for an executive session?
Uh, we could probably do it for the next executive session, so it's on the agenda.
We don't want to wait too late on this, the grass is growing.
Yeah, I know what you mean. Okay, let's put it on for executive session to, to do that. That is a, an issue that we can.
I don't understand enough about the issue to tell you about.
The unauthorized use of town property for self-benefit? You know, taking of either trees or whatever off of town property without authorization from the town.
You moving a tree?
No, usually that is.
I'm just an example.
Oh, okay. I'm definitely opposed to taking down trees.
John, I want to give you a quick answer because I really don't know the answer. I have to think about.
Okay.
What fits in the categories.
If it can fit the category, then we should have it on executive session. Now we'll put it on a regular.
We're talking about.
Yeah, he's talking about when you set the agenda, but we really need to move that in. So it doesn't happen again.
Yes, yeah. Anything else? Okay, remarks of the select board? Does anyone wish to make any comments? Okay, which leads us to the announcements. Well, the first one, I can't, I can't hold to because I don't know if I can do it every Thursday afternoon. It says I will hold office hours every Thursday afternoon from 4:30 to 6:00 p.m. or by appointment. Let me hold off on that until the next meeting, until I figure out some personal issues. But I will take any call for an appointment at this point in time. And I would like to be able to do the 4:30 to 6:00 p.m. on Thursdays, but I just haven't worked that out personally at this point in time. The veterans' agent office hours are Wednesdays from 8:30 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. at the town hall and from 11:40 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. at the senior center. Services for Dalton veterans are now available Monday through Friday through the North Adams Veteran Services Department. Call 413-662-3040. Public Power is a town supplier for municipal electrical aggregation program. You will, you will see the name as a supplier of electricity on your ever-source bill unless you have another supplier. To opt in or out of the program, go online to colonialpowergroup.com/Dalton or call Public Power at 1-800-830-2944. The Conservation Commission is looking for new members. How many, Bob?
One.
One?
One and associate members.
One regular and one associate member?
Well, he was warden, so we could have as many as we want.
Okay. If interested, please contact the town manager's office at 684-6111, extension 11. Please note the Dalton's official meeting postings, agendas, and minutes can be viewed at mytowngovernment.org/01226. State Representative Paul Mark holds office hours at Dalton Town Hall, 462 Main Street in the Callahan Room on Tuesdays from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. with the exception of the third Tuesday of each month. On the third Tuesday, office hours are 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the town hall and from 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the Dalton Senior Center. You can reach his office at his district number, which is 413-464-5635. The building inspector holds office hours on Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. and on Tuesday, 8:00 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. I declare that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body.
I move we go into executive session to conduct a strategy in preparations for negotiation with non-union personnel and litigation and consider the purchase and value of real property and not return to open session.
I have a second?
Oh, yes, I'll second that motion.
Okay. You made the motion to, and seconded to go into executive session. Roll call, both Mr. Boyle.
Yes.
Mr. Howell.
Yes.